Well, next, I think, John, it's dot com, is it? Not dot. It was very informative and helpful was the survey that was done, which was with seven or eight hundred people responded. And you see that in the first few captured in the first few slides. And I really, I think, you know, it strikes me that it's.
Outline now are considered things that have been taken into the input process. And that's drafted from the community, that all of the feedback that has been gathered through the survey, through our stakeholder engagement sessions, those have all been filtered through the input intake process.
And I would like to just add so that this really does, I think, become a discussion on, on kind of the process, and it still is a process. The planning commission tomorrow, they have a workshop.
They have workshop tomorrow noon.
So a lot of, I think, the questions or comments directed today at Mr. Taylor, which he wasn't prepared, we didn't realize that these questions were going to come up. Some more of this is going to be vetted and fleshed through with the planning commission. So this is not the end of the process. It still is the very much.
Yeah, we do not have a final document or anything yet. So. Well, I was curious as much as anything else, one slide out of the entire, both the survey and the goals and objectives struck me, and that's the one I asked Petra to pull up, dealing with diversity of housing. And it seemed to suggest that the survey results were not accurate, legitimate, but I, the two phrases that really, I really struck me, homogenating housing is a dangerous and alarming condition. And, and the one further talking about, you know, moving and embracing a dangerous precedent was trying to grasp what was underpinned that, given the fact that we have a pretty diverse housing stock on the island between villas, cottages, condominiums, multifamily, single family. And the quality and availability of our housing stock.
Is a hot button issue. We know the idea is affordable housing, workforce housing, all those things are a hot button issue. And it is not raised, it has been raised to the attention of our consultant team. So they're focused in and I think will have the appropriate output based on the comments and concerns that are raised by the community.
Okay. Well, some of that, that language just seemed to be very disconnected from what was in the survey results.
Uh, uh, John, Mr. Heinfeldt was trying to get a question in. Go ahead.
No, Brad can finish and then I say something afterwards. You should.
Well, I'll just add, particularly around the housing, a lot of that information was pulled from a work that already was done. Part of informing this plan is utilizing a lot of, outside of just the survey that was conducted, but information that has been done through plans or studies that have been conducted in the past. And so a lot of this work was conducted through the 2019 housing study that was done by the town. And so that inform, or helped inform the process a great deal. And so the comments relatively to the diversity of housing stock really came from that, that study.
Okay. Thank you. And as Stephanie noted, there is a workshop, planning commission workshop, public workshop tomorrow, I believe at noon, that precedes the planning commission meeting.
That's correct. And it is public.
About interests and opinions from the planning commission. Since Brad brought up the housing, it's actually a different part of the housing topic, so not related to the situation of homes and condos and buildings on the island, but the topic of the need for affordable housing on the island, respectively within the town's jurisdiction. And I think as much as we know that we need affordable housing for the people that are serving us and helping us day by day on the island with all their different tasks, from the restaurants to the shops and the golf courses, et cetera. But I think we need to be a little bit more differentiated in how we are including that into the comprehensive plan and the tasks and objectives that results from it for the town and the municipality as such.
Should we?
But I'm, I'm sure that this will be brought up in, in the discussions tomorrow and further on, so that we can really find a good balance between what on one side we strategically want to do in the next 10 years, but also what explicitly has come as feedback from the community.
So I'm not sure this, this constitutes updates so much as it is maybe a discussion that's not on the agenda, but we do know that we have a workshop tomorrow where these discussions could be held. So I would suggest that we just kind of move off of this and if, and. The conflict of interest policy. So again, that's on me and my apologies for not timely responding. Having said that, we'll get into that a little bit more when we, when we touch upon this topic. I do have some concerns about the draft conflict of interest policy, fully supportive of one and a strong ethics and gifts and entertainment set of rules and policies. The question is, how do those work in practice? What is the process for implementing that? Who reviews? Who makes decisions based on what criteria? What is appeals process, et cetera? And my concern is, none of that is really outlined in the draft policy we have before. And I'm not sure we can wordsmith some of that, but we can talk about that a little bit more. The other agenda item relates to the town attorney's contract agenda item. And at last week's Ways and Means Committee meeting, and my concern here is more process or procedural one, is that what the Ways and Means Committee approved was a change in the compensation structure for the town attorney from a fixed price, which was currently a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, to a hourly rate, which I would acknowledge is essentially a market rate. So it didn't have any issue with that. What I do have grave concerns about is with respect to how this was presented on today's agenda, which is that this was the contract, what is before us is the contract that was approved by the Ways and Means Committee. And that is simply factually incorrect. All the Ways and Means Committee addressed was the compensation issue. There is a substantive change that was made unilaterally by staff. I pointed this out. And unfortunately, I remained in there, notwithstanding my pointing out the fact that the term and termination provision, in addition to changing the compensation structure, what is before us changes what is a one-year contract into a contract of indefinite duration. And that was not considered by the Ways and Means Committee. So what is before us now, and I was told, I was suggested to me that I could make a motion to take out that language. And I suggested, no, that language should not be in there in the first place, that the staff doesn't have the prerogative nor authority to change what the Ways and Means Committee approved next week. But we can get into then some of the substantive issues around that later on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Stephanie?
Yes, just one update. Just to let everyone know that we, you all have a retreat coming up this coming Monday, September 11th, starts at eight thirty, go until about noon, one o'clock, and it's open to the public. And we'll get the agenda out by the end of the week. That's it.
Very good. Citizen comments.
Maura McIlvein, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. I really wanted to talk about Tab Seven, which is the attorney contract. First, I wanted to note councilmen who are participating remotely, sometimes when you are speaking, it's very muddied. So I just want to make you aware of that. We can't hear everything you're saying clearly. So to the attorney contract, which is Tab Seven. In addition to Mr. Belt's observation, Councilman Belt's observation, that all the Ways and Means Committee did was approve the rate change, not any of the term changes. In fact, I asked about the terms at the Ways and Means Committee and was assured that would be done in a public meeting, not by the, not just put in the document. And then, of course, all these changes were put in the document anyway. Two of the provisions, though, I have serious concerns about. One was in the prior draft. And it didn't occur to me at the time, but it now has crystallized in my mind. It says that the town attorney will represent the town and its officials, officers and employees in litigation and administrative proceedings as directed by the mayor. I'm into A seven. It's my understanding, under state law, that council directs all activities and administrative actions of this body and has the fiduciary duty to all of us, and that the client here is not the mayor, but the town council. So I have a concern that one-fifth of council is directing the attorneys or the attorneys' work and not all of council. So I would ask you to consider changing that to make it, I think, compliant with South Carolina law and in a year and only get paid 120. So if you look at it from a quantum merit or other type of fairness sense, it made some sense, he could get a bonus when he was on a flat rate. It makes no sense to me when he's on an hourly rate, that in addition to that, there should be a kicker of some type. So I would ask you to reconsider and take that out as well. Thank you.
Brad McIlvein, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. I'd like to talk about the conflict of interest policy. I agree with Councilman Belt that a conflict of interest policy is incredibly important. It's also been long overdue. And it is completely necessary to give the public the sense that they understand that there aren't conflicts of interest and that there, that everything is being done in the appropriate way. I have one specific comment when I was reading through it. As I, as Councilman Belt noted, there's not a whole lot of procedures which are important for how you actually resolve conflicts. Having done this recently on the Kika bylaws, we know how, we tried to address that. And it's important that you actually do that because if you have a conflict and you have a dispute about the conflict, it's important to understand how that gets resolved. But the one concern I do have is you talk about disclosures, but it says all conflict of interest disclosures are held in strictest confidence possible and are shared only on a need to know. And so what you're saying, we're going to disclose conflicts, but nobody can know about it. How does that, any assurance that conflicts are properly being addressed?
All of us volunteer because we have a passion for and a commitment to the arts. I think our total attendance exceeded 5,000 and many of our concerts sold out within a few days of ticket release. We have over 4,000 subscribers to the Arts Council mailing list. If you don't know, funding for sponsored arts events is Savior, Holy Spirit Church, Turtle Point Clubhouse. And as Brad said, we've got a performance at Seabrook on Wednesday, tomorrow. Well, over the past several years, it's been increasingly difficult and expensive to schedule these events. This is especially true of resort, resort venues. The resort as it should markets, it's the West Beach Conference Center to organizations for multi-day events, which means there must like, less likely, officials who initiated the study. The idea was initiated by part-time and full-time Kiowa residents. We wanted the study to provide a detailed market, operational, financial, economic, and social impact analysis of a multi-use facility that could house spaces for a small theater, perhaps exhibition space for artists, possible classrooms and studios. We wanted to address such questions as, is there community support for such a facility? Are there enough activities and events that would make such a facility viable? How much might it cost to build such a facility? Would community members and visitors support it? What would it take to operate it? What would be the best governance structure for such a facility? How big might it be, number of seats, et cetera? Where might it be located? And are there partners or collaborators that might be interested in such a facility? And could the facility generate rental from, rental income from diverse sources? Well, the first phase, as you know, was, was delivered to council in April. Duncan is going to summarize the second phase in just a moment. I just wanted to say that we're incredibly appreciative that Kiowa residents and visitors support the arts. And we recognize that the arts add to the quality of life on the island. As Brad mentioned, the most recent surveys, including the Kika member survey, listed amenities should be the top focus of the Kika Board of Directors. And the commitment of the town council and the mayor, and I want to mention that they're, what he's going to report on is not a prescriptive template for what the town and/or the Arts Council is required to do to build and operate a facility.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to return to present the second half of our feasibility study to you. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the steering committee that acted as our client through this process. Brad, Stephanie, Ruthie, David, other members of the Arts Council were all very helpful, ensuring that we connected to the right people, collected all the input we needed to collect, and developed ideas that reflected the needs, wants, and interest of your community. So I was in, earlier this year, I presented to you our needs assessment, which was the first half of the study that essentially said, yes, we think there's a need and a market opportunity based on potential audiences, users, the lack of other facilities in the market area, and how and why we believe this project aligns with the broader goals you've set for your community. It was a good, inclusive process, lots of interviews and tours, data collection. We had a great public meeting here in research on other projects around the country that informed our recommendations. We concluded that, yes, there is strong market potential, there are gaps in the existing inventory of facilities serving the region, there is high demand on the part of users, and a project like this definitely aligns with your goals. So on that basis, we recommended a set of facilities, the key being a 300 to 400-seat flexible theater that is good for a range of disciplines, music, dance, theater, film, speakers. We also recommended additional multipurpose space, additional space for rehearsal, teaching plus exhibition space. And then it would be great to also have kind of an outdoor component around that. 600 bucks a square foot, 700 and 800. That sort of 600 is probably capturing sort of high school quality facilities, 700 gets a little bit better and 800, a little bit better. Now, 800 is still not the Taj Mahal by any stretch, it's still, but it's a higher level professional quality venue. Then you have to add to that soft costs, preparing the site, fixtures, furnitures, equipment, fees, permits, that adds another 30%. So what that took us to is then a cost range for the overall project, which is everything except the actual acquisition of a site, that ranges from about 20 million to 26 million dollars. I know those are big numbers. We have seen, as I just, tremendous cost escalation in the last three years, but it is what it is. This is the reality that we're dealing with around the country with this building type. Robert and his team also developed some massing diagrams. They did a single-story version, so you see the auditorium, and then some of the other spaces around it, front of house on the top, back of house down underneath. He did a scaled back version that cuts out a couple of the classrooms and storages that reduces the site required from about one acre to 0.77 acres. And there's the second floor there. And then he did a two-story option, essentially trying to shrink the footprint down in case it's developed in a site where we really don't have that much room. So here he got it down to about 0.8 acres. There's the first level and the second level there, where we're putting a couple of classrooms, storage up on the second level. So the next question was, where might we put it? And the steering committee at the town helped us identify, as of today, four possible sites. The first one, within the Andale West development, there's a one-acre site that potentially could be enlarged, but it's in a terrific location, owned by Riverstone, really an excellent gateway for the next phase of their development. And the master planning has been approved, as Brad has mentioned, they are making some progress with the overall planning for the project. The second site here at the municipal center, just over across that, 1.6 acres that is potentially available right on the thoroughfare, potentially limited onsite parking, but space to develop, and you own that property. The Church of Our Savior has expressed an interest in selling a portion of their site. There's about sort of four acres of the total eight acres behind sort of the current development area, mostly wooded. The challenge is sort of getting to it. And they've suggested that they'd be willing and to sort of extend the road that goes past the graveyard there to get to that back half of the site, which makes it possible. And then the last one at Freshfield Village, here there's a 3.5 acre site owned by Kiowa Partners right next to NLN. It's a little bit tougher to access than the Freshfield site we talked about a moment ago, but it's closer to Seafills and is interesting. So the question is always, how do you decide which site you like the best? So our response was to develop a set of criteria with the steering committee, the issues that we think are important in your community to determine what might be the best site. So is it large enough? This criteria called community fit is really the most sort of nebulous one, but potentially the most important. What we're saying is, does the site allow for a project that has the style and scale that will be acceptable to and supported by our community? It's sort of, how does the site, how do people in the community react to it? Is there something that seems to them that is not sort of different or unworkable for Kiowa, or is it something that really makes sense in this community? Cost is an issue, availability, environmental impact, and then accessibility, both for residents of Kiowa Island, but then for visitors and also those coming down the highway from Charleston. And finally, proximity to amenities. Is the site close to amenities that would be attractive to program participants and audiences? So we took those criteria and we took those sites and we bravely attempted to score them, which was, which was a little bit terrifying because you all know more about these sites than we do, but with the help of the steering committee, we gave it our, our shot. So the top three criteria, we scored at sort of 20, and the bottom four, we scored out of 10. So it adds up to 100 for each site. So this is the beginning, this is the first attempt to score these locations. I'm sure that as time passes and you all learn more about these locations, you will continue to refine and advance the scores for these sites and the others that emerge. What's really important is having the right criteria and the right weighting according to those criteria. As it turns out with this exercise, they're all good, and none of these are really bad sites, but two of them seem to rise up a little bit better, the Andale West location, and, and then the municipal center location scored slightly higher than the other two. So the problem with doing that exercise is that you are not ready today to choose a site. There are, there are important steps that you have to go through before it's time to make any kind of a financial commitment towards a site. So the work to be done is to continue to refine and weight the site criteria and as time advances with a cross-section of community leadership who are engaged in that exercise. Then you should set a date or an event that triggers a more serious look at sites. So when you've completed the capital campaign or you've secured the lead gifts that allow you to start with the project, maybe that then becomes the trigger to become more serious about sites. And I always encourage our clients to be intelligently opportunistic, sort of able to recognize and respond to the right opportunity as and when it arises. So it's, say, you know, 18 months from now, suddenly a new site emerges and you have the criteria and the right people at the table to go, yes, this potentially is a site that responds to the criteria, let's, let's jump on it. Access to great facilities for artists and arts organizations based here or nearby, contribute to the vibrancy and positioning of Kiowa with a first-class amenity. You've already understood that that's important. So those are all good goals. The challenge is to do all of that in a way that you can sustain operations with an appropriate balance of earned income, ticket sales and rental income and so on, with contributed income, grants and donations, and other sources of funding that are generally needed to sustain facilities. So we had a terrific session here, June 8th, we had 22 representatives of potential users of facilities and another group on Zoom talking about their needs, both physically and operationally. We had a great discussion about some of the physical choices, full fly tower, orchestra pit, the importance of food and beverage operations. And then I talked to the group a lot about how the building should be operated to serve their needs. Who's the right operator? How do you manage sort of different groups wanting access in the same dates? And the importance of ticketing and data sharing. The highlight of that event was we put blank calendars on the tables and groups essentially pretended that it was time to schedule the first year. So they reserved dates. And it was a good exercise that gave us a sense that demand for that larger venue is pretty strong and sort of well-spread through the year. The demand we saw in that second theater sort of led us to back off on that space a little bit. And I think we're stressing now purpose room rather than a dedicated second performance space. So it serves performance, it can do film, but it can also do rehearsals, and it can do meetings and special events. We looked at a number of different ways that these facilities could be operated, and ultimately we've made the recommendation that it should be operated by a new or a repurposed nonprofit. It can be led by credible local leaders. You can have through that organization sort of a co-op function where users can sort of earn dates in the venue. You need that nonprofit organization to run a private sector capital campaign for the project. And it's a good way to really focus in on the importance of community access. In our business plan, we've also written chapters on some of these other issues, which I won't go into today, but these are complicated and labor-intensive buildings to run. Running the rental business, food and beverage, ticketing, making sure that you're doing the right things in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, safety and security, and environmental sustainability. So we have designed an organization to do that. These are the specific positions we recommend that would be hired to run the building. There's eight full-time staff, about six part-time positions, and then the blue boxes are sort of event-based staff, people who are hired to come and support particular performances along the way. The other thing we've done is in the pro forma, not everyone gets hired right away, with sort of, we tried to be a bit more incremental, sort of saying, let's, let's let the building get open and start to program slowly, carefully, build that sort of programming, and then finish up the staffing complement over that five-year period. So this is a summary of the activity for the theater and the multipurpose room, as well as a classroom. The key is the theater itself in year one, if something is going on in there 200 days a year. So that's a pretty good level of activity. With the multipurpose room, it starts at about 176 days, but you'll see for both spaces, they grow each year, there's more rentals, there's a little bit more presenting. And I, let me say something about that. Sort of rentals, you just make the building available to groups, they pay a little rent to come and use it. Presenting, which is what the Arts Council does now, you book a touring artist or entertainer, you, you, you pay their fee, you take the risk, and you hope that the money that you earn, ticket sales, exceeds the money that you put out to market and pay that fee and other direct costs. So the building is, there's probably more rental activity than anything, but that presenting function remains important. I also wanted to highlight this chart because I know that there were questions when we were presenting the needs assessment about the detail to which we were going to be looking at, you know, price points and, and different types of activity. So David and I and others at the Arts Council worked up these projections about how presenting would work based on average artist fees, average marketing costs, the ticket prices that we think are supportable on the island, to give us a strong sense of the economics of that presenting activity. So here is a summary of the operating budget, and it starts the year before the building opens, so you have to hire some staff to get in there and start spending money. But in year one, the way it works is that there's earned revenue, ticket sales and rental income, other fees to renters, food and beverage, and so on, of about 1.1 million. Then you have operating costs, which are, again, about two-thirds people, 1.55 million. And what that means is you need about $450,000 of contributed income to sustain that. So we've said, we've set a scenario, essentially you're raising money from individuals, from corporate sector, from government, different levels of government, and from foundations to make up that. and from foundations to make up that number. And we've come to those numbers, that annual contributed income goal, based on looking at regional and national projects like this and how they have funded their operations. The other thing to note is that the building starts in its first year of operation, supporting about 71% of expenses with earned revenue. And by the fifth year, that's up to about 75%. So you're covering three-quarters of your bills with earned revenue coming into the building, which means that the annual fundraising is kept to a reasonable level. One of the other exercises was to project the economic impact of the project on Charleston County. This may not be particularly relevant or important to you all, Kiowa, but for example, if you go back to Charleston County, seeking their support, it will be beneficial to be able to say to them, the construction project drives $23 million of new sales, $7 million in new earnings, and 125 years of person employment in Charleston County. And then the combination of this new operating entity, plus the impact of audiences coming to performances, will every year in Charleston County bring $1.85 million of new sales, 500,000 of new earnings, and will create 16 new jobs in Charleston County in addition to the people working in the building. So the economic activity of the building itself will drive this new economic activity in the county. So the last major portion of the project was to help you start to think about how to fund this. The, I think the town has been very clear that there is an expectation, a desire to have the private funders and fundability. And then we looked at some comparable national projects and regional ones up in Cornelius and the Highland Center to look at how they were funded. So the thing about the project is if it ends up at a site like the Municipal Center or Church of Our Savior, it's really going to be two partners, the public and the private sector, working together to sort out who contributes what, both on the capital side and the operating side. So it will happen in one community we've worked in where the public sector provides 80% of the funding for capital and the private sector provides the bulk of the funding for ongoing operations. And the next community down the road, it's the opposite. So there's no one way to do this. But what's interesting here is because two of these projects involve working with a development partner, we think that essentially means it's a three-part campaign project because developers and development partners bring other resources to a project like this. You can work with them on securing the site, on getting infrastructure, on getting cash. And in some cases, developers, you can negotiate with them for them to build the corn shell of the building and for the rest of the campaign to simply complete the outfitting of the project. But in communities like this, the biggest fundraising challenge is turning donors away from where they've come from to their lives here. So a lot of donors, wealthy residents of the island, give money back to where they went to school or their original communities where they grew up. They haven't been in Kiowa long and it's hard to get them to turn their philanthropy. But we have seen this happen. Communities by having a very sort of social aspect to these campaigns can turn resort community donors, residents into donors. And we've seen this in projects from Beaver Creek, Colorado, to Naples, Florida, to Hilton Head, where you can encourage some of the wealth now residing in the community to, to turn its attention to their potential to impact this locality. Naming rights are an important part of project funding. I suspect that in this project, it'll, it's less likely to have naming rights from a corporation and more likely to be from individuals. For a corporation, naming rights, for them, it's all about measuring impressions. How many people are going to drive by? So having a big sign in a high visible location is what their priority is. And I think that might be a little bit problematic here. I think you're more likely to seek a private sector naming rights, which are more philanthropic in nature. But it's also important to add an endowment campaign and operating reserves to that work. So when, one of the next steps for you will be to hire, for the Arts Council or whomever, will be to hire a fundraising consultant to investigate the feasibility of embarking on a campaign from these various sources, public, private, and the developer. So what we've done is to help them get started, working with the steering committee. We have developed elements of a case statement. And a case statement is the pitch essentially that the fundraisers will use to grow it and sell the project to donors. We think that these elements are what will really drive the capital campaign, that there is an active and growing market for the arts on and around Kiowa Island, that the Arts Council's successful presenting program, as David mentioned, is severely hampered by limitations of current facilities, that adding is a national and international destination. So finally, the last piece of work we've done is to, is to develop a critical path plan that suggests that moving forward, the project now has to move down three parallel tracks. The first one and the one to get started with next is thinking about fundraising. So it's forming a finance committee, embarking upon a capital campaign study, developing a financing plan, and then proceeding with the capital campaign. And you can see I've laid it out essentially to go through this four-year period, but I'm presuming that you start sort of right away at the beginning of 2024. The second element is physical planning and design. So once you've gone far enough along to believe that you have the potential to attract the funding necessary from the private sector or whomever, you begin the physical planning. You form a building committee, do a programming study to sort of verify the pieces and how they sit on a site. Then you do schematic design, design development and so on. And with that plan, then the building is ready to open at the end of year four. And then the third track is planning for operations. And the key being there that you can't just wait until opening night. There's a lot of work to be done, two and three and even four years out, to decide how you want the building operated by who that right operator is and then starting to develop the policy and the practices so that you're ready for a great opening night on Kiowa Island. So as a final slide, I'd just like to-
I have a couple of comments, not really questions, if I can go.
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, thanks. This is really just to, I want to make sure the rest of the town council are aware of a couple of big picture items. This is, first of all, this is a great starting point for where we're heading so we can get our arms around it. But what I wanted to let you guys know from, again, a big picture perspective, on slide number six, the mathematics for calculating the, the size of the facility is indicating that this will be a 350-seat facility. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I just wanted to, to use that as a starting point so we know what we're talking about. It's 350 seats. But what I did want to highlight is that parking, of the calculations for amount of areas that are required to have this facility. Again, from the engineering background that I have, it's, it's more or less one acre provides 200 parking spots. So we have, big picture stuff, if we have 350 seats divided by half, assuming you have two people per, per car, you need a, you need parking for about 175 cars, which is another acre. And I'm just bringing that up only because I'm not saying you can't do it, but we have to keep that in our mind when we're going through a selection process because on slide 13, we were looking at the Andale West location. I think, I would love to have it in Andale West, but that spot doesn't have enough, doesn't have enough acreage for parking, particularly when you consider there's going to be other people there. So some way, somehow, we would, we would need to get another acre over and above what, what we just saw in, in this presentation. And then finally, the, the only last comment I wanted to have, again, a big picture thing. This is on slide 28, where he has the operating budget. There are not any costs in there for financing the building or the land. Now, it would be wonderful if we can get donors, but the operating budget is not including those financing costs if we have to go out on a loan. And I just wanted to let you guys know that. And it also, I don't see a line item in there for any kind of taxes that we would have to bring up. And I'm highlighting that only because the result of the cost versus income, in some years, you only have a surplus of $13,000 or $14,000 and that would be eradicated by operating costs and taxes. So again, those are just the big picture things I just wanted you guys all to be aware of.
Thanks, Russ. Duncan, that was, Russ jumped in real quick. Thank you. This is really very well done. You've, you've come a long way since, was it April then you were back here?
I'm asking for any specific action on the part of town council.
Yeah, I think the next step might be to empower the expansion of the steering committee to, to take a look at other members, to continue the discussions about this, to talk about the recommendations that Duncan's group has made in terms of governance and operations, space and site options. I don't want to get down the weeds yet, but-
Continuing, continuing our discussion with both residents, visitors and corporate partners, address their concerns, suggestions and viewpoints. And like any new ideas, this facility is not going to happen overnight unless there's substantial support. And that support can't happen overnight. We're going to continue to point out our challenges as an arts council in terms of presenting events and listen and seek input to meet these challenges. So it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. When I lived in York County, I served on the York County Arts Council as well as their planning committee for a new facility. That was eight years ago. They just hired a fundraising person this year. And even though they have a site and a building design, they haven't broken ground yet. So this process can take a long time and it's going to involve a lot of discussion. So I wanted to emphasize that as well. Thanks.
So can I make a comment? Something that David said right at the first when he stood up there was, we're not asking for anything right now. And I think that's very important. We have a habit as a group of jumping in immediately to solve your problems. And I think this would not be a good time to do that. It would be a good time to contemplate the work that you've done with regard to all of these plans and kind of start to put it in perspective so that when you do come and ask us for something, we can respond intelligently. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, and, and what the feasibility study has done has given us a start to look at all the issues that are incumbent. If we wanted to do this, how could we do this? And what are the, you know, what are the challenges? What are the pitfalls? What do we have to do? So you're exactly right. I appreciate that.
I'd just add kind of one other, and by the way, I want to really commend David and Duncan and his team and the work of the Arts Council in, in shepherding this process through. Duncan alluded to competitive positioning. It's one of the prisms I've been looking at through during this process. And he referenced Highlands, there were a couple of other slides in here, both physically visiting, and I know Stephanie and Ruthia visited Highlands as well as the Kane Center in Lake Norman in North Carolina. I visit Highlands as well and more recently Sun Valley's facilities. But online research, and Duncan and the team are familiar with others, like Hilton Head, Beaver Creek, I think Michael may be familiar with Beaver Creek's facility, Crested View, Stowe, Vermont, Saratoga, Sedona, all communities that are kind of resort communities, smaller full-time populations, not that dissimilar from kind of Kiowa Island and, and Seabrook combined, not even counting what's just a little bit further up the road, that all have very robust visitors, a number of visitors because of, of their very strong resort facilities. So all of those are communities that, most of them have more recently built or enhanced their arts and cultural facilities to accommodate both their full-time residents as well as to enhance the, the offering for visitors and resort guests.
Thanks, Brad. You fellows, anything? Michael?
Yes, I would like to add, I think the, the study has given us, you know, a clear indication from my point of view. There seems to be potentially, you know, a market for something like this, but I clearly don't see this as a task for the town council or even more the municipality to push forward. This needs to be and can only be an initiative based on, purely based on the community if there is enough support for that from the community, from donors, from supporters, from, from whoever wants to contribute. That can only be the, the basis for, for this facility on Kiowa. This is not, to my opinion, the responsibility of a municipality like Kiowa Island. That was my first comment. So, which means, to, to finish this clearly with an action plan, this can only be carried by an independent, not town-related, steering committee of whatever kind that pushes this idea forward and provides the, the respective funding. That maybe at some point the town will contribute to this funding is, is something we can discuss later. But I would have great hesitancy to allow from here onwards that representatives of the town or even town-associated organizations like the, the Arts Council is involved in this. This should be carried clearly by an organization purely coming from the community. Second comment I wanted to make, as, as it was referenced to Beaver Creek, as we have here, the Villar Performing Arts Center being very successful. My wife and I probably join 15-plus performances each year just here in, in Beaver Creek. This is a purely community and sponsor-based entity that is providing services to not only the, the resort community, but the entire valley all the way to Breckenridge and Denver. As I looked at the data for, for, that they have from both their sponsors, donors and visitors. So this can be an example for Kiowa, but only as it is here in Beaver Creek. It can only be carried by the community and not, and should not be carried by the municipality. Because also when you look at the numbers that were presented, this goes clearly far beyond the capabilities of the town of Kiowa Island. Thank you.
So I would, I would repeat what I said before. You know, I think to even, even take the position that this is not going to be done by the town is probably not appropriate today. You know, we, I think at, at the least, we should wait till, David, you and your group meet on Thursday and kind of discuss it and, and formulate what you think might be a good plan from the Arts Committee. And, you know, there, there might be an official role for the town to play. There might not be, but to presume one way or the other today, I just don't think is appropriate. I think we have to, have to take this under advisement. I mean Duncan, Duncan did a great job today compared to where I thought he was the first time he came. I mean, this is, this is way down the road, but there's still a long way to go to decide how we want this thing to be structured and where and by whom and everything. And today is just premature to make any of these hard decisions, in my opinion.
Well, I agree. I mean, I, I think that there's a slide that talks about governance options and recommendations and the whole business planning. And I think as you mentioned, David, Duncan, one of you said something about the study that you were working on, it took eight years. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a long journey. And I think all of those issues relative to, to governance and, and control and, you know, fiduciary responsibility, all of those things will be worked out in time. I, I have no doubt they'll all be worked out in time. But for right now, we have what we have. And we have an extremely talented and engaged arts council and, and steering committee. And I, they're not complaining, they're, they're carrying the water and I, I think they should just continue to, I'm not quite certain in terms of empowerment, if, if they need more quote power, I, I, let us know, let me know what they need. But I, I think you have the resources to continue and we encourage you to do that. And I think John said it very well. It's just, we, I'm just delighted to see all the work that you've done and we look forward to, to additional. You mentioned that, you know, in, in community engagement, your meetings are open, so Thursday meeting, so- Your meetings are open, so Thursday meeting, so clearly folks from residents, whoever can attend the meeting and offer advice and counsel and.
Yeah, and I think that's vital, and that's the empowerment I'm talking about, is more voices at the table for us. I think we need more people who have even more, we could use more expertise even on the arts council as we move into this. But even the transition from a town arts council to a separate 501(c)(3), that could be a long transition as well. And that's the kind of thing we're going to be discussing. We may want to expand the membership of the arts council, which we talked about, and that might have to go into, you know, that might require action of town council.
Well, for right now, we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Steph? That was.
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
You have your one, and Erin.
Item two, sea turtle research donation letter discussion. Welcome.
So I'm here with a request for the town of Kiowa to support the turtle research fundraising letter that was in the materials, and to also for the town to assist in sending out this information through our e-news distribution. So the University of Georgia's Northern Recovery Unit Lagerhead DNA Project collects data on maternal DNA from turtle eggs to identify the individual female associated with each egg, and develop a census of the nesting population. Typically, this project is funded through a federal grant, but now it's dependent on state grants and individual contributions. So this request, so the Turtle Patrol is in support of this, you'll see that they signed it. Lynn is here today, if you have any more questions about that. Kika is also on the letter, and they have supported it, and they will be sending it out through their e-news as well. So I'm just requesting that we approve the letter, and that we're able to send it through our e-news.
That, not, that's all that you're asking, but that is what you're asking, it's just...
It's not a fundraising request.
Not asking the town for money.
No.
And add our name on the letter.
Yes.
Not just send it out, but to add our name on the letter.
Our logo will be at the top.
Do we, that's okay.
Yeah, it's just up to you all if you'd like to do that, because it's raising money, and our name is on the letterhead, so it is looking as a fundraising opportunity.
So what, do we need a motion to allow it to be sent out under our letterhead?
To be able to, yes, to be able to support that our name goes out on the letterhead that is doing fundraising, but it's for, as she said, and you have a copy.
Why would we not want to do that?
Where does the money go?
It goes to the university to fund that project, the research project.
We're not asking for money, we're asking to be able to send this letter out.
Well, it's fundraising, so our name goes on top, so we are being, we are part of asking people to support the cause, and to give money to this other, to this nonprofit organization.
But it first goes to the conservancy. The conservancy is.
Yeah, and so they collect the money, it's just because they're a 501(c)(3), so that's how they're involved.
And then they, and then.
And then they distribute it to the project.
Yep.
Can I say, I don't have a problem, I think I don't have a problem that we publish a letter in our e-news. I do have a problem putting our letterhead on it. So if that letter can come from the organization who is asking for the support, which is my understanding, is not the town, but somebody else, have them put a letter forward on their letterhead, and I think we can proudly present that in our e-news letter. But I don't think it's the task for the municipality to act as, you know, somebody being deeply involved in the fundraiser of a third-party organization.
So the letter is from our Turtle Patrol, that's who signed it at the bottom, and so that's kind of our connection to this.
That is, Turtle Patrol is part of the town, so.
Yeah, I think I agree with council member Heidingsfelder's comments. I'm certainly supportive of this effort, and would have, like he said, have no issue with this being sent out by the town. But it does give me some pause to have the town be more formally associated with soliciting donations.
So would the signature at the bottom being Turtle Patrol be a problem?
Yeah, I think that's the issue, because Turtle Patrol is an umbrella of the town. So it's not that Turtle Patrol being an issue there, but it still is part of the town, because they're not a separate organization, so that's what the council's saying. But we can, as council, if they want to support it, then yes, then they say we can support it, then Turtle Patrol can then sign.
Why couldn't it come from the conservancy?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lynn Sager, permit holder for the Kiowa Island Turtle Patrol. I live at 582 Oyster Rake, and have been a full-time resident since 2002, and involved with Turtle Patrol for all of those years as well. This request I brought forward to the conservancy, because they have raised funds for this project for us in the past. And it was my understanding that the conservancy board and Donna Wyndham wanted to just gain the support in total with the town, with Kika, and with the conservancy. And it's my understanding that it would be the conservancy's letterhead, but the Kika and the town would be in consorts with this as well, and agree to it.
I think that's fine. I think that's the only thing, the letterhead, so. I think you answered it, Lynn.
So the letter, the letter then would go out under the banner of the conservancy.
That was my understanding, but I don't know the legalities of all of these things as far as letterheads, and the fact that the Turtle Patrol is a volunteer organization under the town of Kiowa Island.
Lynn, I think one question they have is the sample letter that we have here.
Yes.
For the signature, we know that the conservancy would collect the money, they would transfer it to Northern Recovery Unit Lagerhead DNA Project, but it has where you would sign it. So the way that this is set up, they put together templates, so this template is showing that we would put it on the town's letterhead, and that you would sign it, because they have your name on the bottom. I think that's what's the confusing thing, because if it's on the, if it's on the conservancy's letterhead, then your name wouldn't be at the bottom.
Right, right.
So I think that's where, they've created a template for the town to be able to use to allow for us to put it on our letterhead, and allow for you to sign it.
I understand, okay. And so they must have done the same thing with Kika as well?
Right, yeah, they would then have it where they would have a letterhead where Kika could put it on their letterhead, and whoever from Kika would sign it. So it seems like a personal letter, a personal, you know, personal request going out to whomever we send this out to, and it would be on the town's letterhead, and it's with your signature on it.
Okay, I understand. Oh, this was basically my request to the conservancy.
Well, if it went out from the conservancy, and it did not have the town of Kiowa Island or Turtle Patrol masthead, and simply then we republished that on our website.
Support it.
Or E-Blas, that seems.
We can do that, we can just take off that information.
Maybe we need a motion to that effect.
I would move approval of a letter contention upon it being from, signed by or from the Kiowa Island Conservancy, and with no, the town of Kiowa Island, Turtle Patrol, town of Kiowa Island mastheads would not be part of that letter.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to add to what I said earlier. So I think we have, we should not have any problem to strongly state in the newsletter that we are supporting that effort. As a town, as a council, as, you know, under Lynn's responsibility, I think that's very appropriate and supportive, if it's a letterhead that comes, and signature that comes from the conservancy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lynn, just, how much money, wait, are you, did I miss that? Oh, raised forty thousand. Answered it. Okay, Deruda? Or John, whoever, this is approval for the proposal from the municipal banking services, this came from the Ways and Means Committee, so.
Yep.
Want to comment on it, or?
So let me do a quick comment, Deruda, and then you can give us the details.
Yeah, if you need any more details, as we discussed.
Trust me, you can give us the details.
Okay.
At the Ways and Means Committee, we asked, Deruda had gone back to several banks to see, you know, what the options were for us in terms of our banking relationships, and came back with the recommendation that we stay with Wells Fargo. And what we asked her to do at the Ways and Means was to go back to Wells Fargo to see if some of the rates could be adjusted in our favor. So she did that. And what Wells Fargo told her was that, that much like when you go to buy a car, you're getting our best rate. But their point was that there were lots of things that they had in their rate structure for us, because we're so small, it really doesn't cost us that much anyway, and that the cost of changing to another bank would be paying to set up all of the relationships with that new bank. And so I guess the gist of it is, Deruda is still requesting that Wells Fargo be the bank we stay with, and maybe you can best explain the additional cost it would be for us to move.
So additional cost is, for example, if we need to set up lockbacks, or we need to get a new equipment for deposits. This is the cost that was not recup in that schedule that was presented to you. So pretty much every single service that we will get with the new bank will bring some additional cost, like a setup cost. And additionally, one thing that Mr. Muffet, he already mentioned that, I was told that we are, for such a small entity, we were given the best rates in the states, and those rates that we're proposing in this proposal are going to be effective July 1st. So we're getting three, almost three months, rather than after the agreement will be signed. So we'll get some additional savings in that regards, in hard fees. So I asked the council to approve the original proposal, they will continue our relationship with Wells Fargo, and also they happy to come for, if there is any desire of the council to come for any of the meetings, and they can talk about our relationship, but I didn't schedule it for today, but if you ever want our person from Wells Fargo to come and talk about a lot more details, they'll happy to be here. So that's my.
So my recommendation would be much the same as we had at the Ways and Means, in that of all of the things that we have to concern ourselves with as a town council, this is kind of small potatoes in terms of trying to decide, do we change our bank, or do we stay where we are? There's never been an indication that Wells Fargo has been a problem for us. And, you know, when you change, sometimes the grass looks greener on the other side of the fence, and it turns out to be astroturf. So my recommendation would be that we have a motion to approve this and move on.
Is that a motion?
Are you in motion?
Sure. I move we stay with this and.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to follow up on the chair of the Ways and Means Committee's comments. We did discuss this at some length.
Yes.
During Ways and Means Committee, I want to note that for the record. And there was a robust discussion, not only of the, kind of the financial elements, but was perhaps not as well reflected in the materials that are here in the agenda, is the additional kind of qualitative aspects that the staff identified. And based upon that conversation and that discussion, the Ways and Means Committee unanimously approved, and I would support that for that same reason.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point. These more subjective elements that Mr. Belt is referring to are those things that may not turn out to be necessarily in your favor, because they don't show up on a financial chart, it's the relationship elements, so, okay.
Okay, but moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item seven. Thank you, Deruda. Tab seven. This also was discussed at Ways and Means, and you heard a preview of it earlier. John, you want to make a comment?
No.
Or nothing?
I can. Would you like me to discuss?
Stephanie might be a better one to do.
Okay.
All right, so at the Ways and Means meeting, there was, as you can see, that I had added on here that Ways and Means Committee recommended that the current contract service agreement for town attorney remains in place, we just changed the compensation rate from fixed to hourly. So we had to go in, I worked with our labor attorney, so the discussion with regards to the term and termination was not a decision of the town administrator that was suggested, this was the recommendation. And the reason being is that we had to go in, we went back to the original contract, but we had to go in and clean up a number of things, because it may not have made sense or be appropriate if you're going to an hourly rate from a fixed rate. And one of the sections that council member Belt's referring to had to do with the term and termination. So through our labor attorney, and based on the South Carolina law, that the town attorney works at the pleasure of council, and we had a second section in there that talked about a sixty-day notice, given that notice, and to pay the attorney an equal, an amount equal to the attorney's compensation earned, he just felt like because it was going hourly that that section was no longer necessary, but then he went ahead and added in there that the town attorney works at the pleasure of council, or at will state, you can let someone go at will, you should have a reason, but we're at will state. So as I said to Mr. Belt when he brought this up, I said if you wanting us to go back to that, maybe clean up some of the language in there, that is a decision that council can make, and it just requires a motion, and we can make that change. There were some other things in there, again, that we had to edit, just to clean up the current contract, because as you may know, we, the labor attorney was proposing a new clean contract, and you all decided you just wanted to deal with the wages at this time. So if you would like to make any changes, you can discuss it and just let us know.
So, if we go back to what happened at the Ways and Means, and we made the motion to change the rate to two hundred dollars an hour as opposed to the fixed price, I think we all agreed that was good. Brad's, Mr. Belt's phrase was "market price," well, I think we all agreed to that. But he was also very clear that that change should be to the existing contract. And so I think, in keeping with what the Ways and Means Committee recommended, we should do that, exactly that. And if we want to make these other changes, it would seem to me that a good time to talk about them, even if they all make perfect sense, maybe do that Monday at the retreat, and make those adjustments. But to have seen this the first time when these notes came out, and not have something against which to compare it, you know, I kind of get what Mr. Belt's saying, it's not exactly what the Ways and Means Committee agreed to do, or recommended to town council, so I'm a little, I think I'm of the opinion that we just change the rate, so that we can get Mr. Wilson paid at that rate, and then some of these other issues, we can settle out in another fashion. It's not going to change things on a day-to-day basis yet.
It's not going to change things on a day-to-day basis, and it can just be that section. I think, I think everyone was okay with everything else that was changed, because it had to be updated, just because reflected.
There was one other addition that was not agreed to by the Ways and Means Committee. What we did was change from a fixed price to an hourly rate of two hundred dollars per hour. There's an additional paragraph in there regarding covering a portion of office expenses.
We didn't comment on that at the Ways and Means.
Right, we did not.
And that's why I'm saying, your comment was the existing contract. So if we want to make other changes, we can, but they probably at a different time.
But what was just said was, already in the draft, we looked at, at the Ways and Means.
At Ways and Means, Dr. Henfalter, that was not, the draft was not approved, what was approved was the hourly rate changed.
No, I understand, but it was included in the draft, and there was no discussion about that particular point of office expenses. It was in the draft.
The motion was to make the change to the rate to the existing contract.
Only the rate, the hourly rate.
Only the rate.
Just so that I understand, Steph, so when you talked with Brian, he kind of came all the way back and said, he suggested this document, he suggested his initial document be modified to reflect the change to the compensation, but then to embody other suggested changes he wished, he thought were appropriate to have in this, in the contract.
So actually, hourly attorney felt council should have adopted the new contract. I went back and said, no, they did not. They just discussed the rate.
Right.
They want to keep the current contract in place.
Right.
We looked through the current contract, and then we, he said, okay, well, then we have to make some edits to the current contract to make it reflect a new rate.
This isn't the current contract.
You are looking at the current contract. The only, you're looking at the current contract in place with amendments. So the amendments that we're discussing is number five.
So that's not the current contract.
That's not the current contract. The current, this...
This is the contract modified.
Modified.
That means it's not the current contract.
Right, yeah, if you want to, yeah.
Modified by Brian, who's suggesting that we incorporate those in the current contract.
Correct, because we made changes to the compensation. So you had to modify some of the language in the current contract, because some of the language in the current contract was only, was based on the fact that it was a flat rate.
And maybe all that's true.
And so you guys received the red line version that had some of the edits that really need to be addressed.
So Steph, just to clarify, you know, the current contract says in the term and termination, the term of this agreement shall be effective from January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023.
Right, that's correct.
Changing the hourly rate, and I ask to get any written document from Labor Council, changing the hourly rate, in of itself does not necessitate changing the term of the contract.
And what I'm hearing today from everyone is that if you all like to make that motion not to change it, then that's, I mean, to change it back.
Ways and Means suggested.
That's what I'm saying, not to change it. If you want to make the motion not to make that change, to go back to what is currently, that's fine.
I don't think we need to do that, because we've never approved this.
I think what we've agreed to at Ways and Means, and I think what we're hearing today, is that we agree that your rate should change from salary to an hourly.
I would move that the council approve the agreement that was approved by, the changed agreement that was approved by the Ways and Means Committee last week.
But there has to be some edits.
Which was to change the hourly rate, from fixed rate to hourly rate, and that was the only change, and that was to the existing contract.
Right, and then there's...
And I would second that motion.
Well, just second, there's a few things in there, because I need to understand. So there's a few things in his contract that probably needs to change, because it discusses things, we're dealing with flat rates, so there's going to be some minor edits that we have to do.
That's fine, and we can talk about that on Monday.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
I think we have to have that discussion. We do, and we may end up, you know what, we may end up right here, but not today.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, all I'm just saying is that, yeah, I'm going to have to make some minor adjustments. I can't just leave it as it and just change a dollar amount, because there's certain things that refer to...
I don't think so. I'd like to see what they are. I don't know why you can't.
They are, I sent them, they were sent to you guys, red line version, so.
Yeah, but there's not, you don't, those other changes...
Most of those were stylistic or editorial, they are not...
Right, that's what I'm just saying. Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
There's a line in there that says you make this much a year, a flat rate. You could almost change that statement to say you get paid $200 an hour.
I know, I'm not just talking about, I'm not just referring to that.
I know, but the other ones we didn't approve. It said to the existing contract. I think that's the, and maybe it's just semantics, but that's what we meant.
Yeah, that's fine, there's just a few things that I'm going to, I will have to...
We'll have to talk about them, but they can change them.
Well, yeah, you've seen them, but okay. When I show it to you, you'll see what I'm talking about.
But we've got a motion, and I've seconded it.
Now, does that include, because as part of the discussion at Ways and Means, what Brad is saying and what you're saying is because that included office...
It didn't, it didn't, though. We didn't have any changes to that. We had, the only change that the Ways and Means Committee approved was changing $120,000 a year to $200 an hour. That was it. That was all.
And I don't, and I don't, if I may add, you know, I don't see that we, A, agreed on a change in term and termination clause, and I also don't see a need currently to make that change, as it is suggested here in the document.
And I don't think, and you're probably right, Michael, and I don't even think we need to talk about it today. We're really saying, we've got a recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee, do we want to adopt that recommendation as a council or not? Not to say that there aren't other things we may want to go back and look at, because there probably are, but not today.
I think, so when we were talking at Ways and Means, one of the things that y'all had negotiated with Mr. Wilson was the 200, well, not referring to you, not saying negotiating, when the discussion occurred, when he submitted his midterm review to you and the mayor, it was for $200 per hour and the $200 per month for payment of general expenses. During Ways and Means, I think as we were talking, we just said $200. So I'm not sure if you guys then meant to purposely leave out the $200 for his monthly payment for office expenses.
So it's very clear in my mind what we meant. And what we meant was, only, for now, only change the rate. That was it.
Okay.
You know, not can he ask for a bonus, not can he, not...
Well, the bonus was already in the current contract.
All we approved as a Ways and Means Committee was, change the rate, period.
So, Mr. Mayor, is that what you understand, that you were approving?
I don't know that I remember. I wanted to make certain that we changed the compensation to $200 an hour. And I think, I do remember what we were moving forward to the Ways and Means Committee, but then we got all turned around in terms of the agreement itself, and what agreement...
And whether what we did in Ways and Means was completely, complete or appropriate and not is irrelevant. What we approved, it is irrelevant, because what we recommended to town council was that we change the rate on the existing contract.
I have a suggestion.
I know, and then the Ways and Means Committee said something else.
Let me listen to my suggestion, just a second. Bear with us, we'll make this retroactive. Let's go another month and take a document and get it redlined, because I don't remember the red line, I don't remember reading it in terms of what, the subtle changes, the semantic changes, the whatever changes, I'd have to see that back in front of me. I was focused on the rate. Or we'll just proceed with the rate right now, but at some point, I think Brian is the labor attorney, wants us to get this contract cleaned up. You want to get the contract cleaned up probably.
And we do need to do that.
I understand that, so...
Yeah, and I mean, I've offered that already. If y'all want to push it down the road, that's fine.
Okay, let's push it down.
I don't want to make it retroactive, because that means I don't get paid for two or three months. So I just like, go ahead and submit, because, I mean, I tell you, it is important, you know, the rate that we discussed was $200 per hour, plus $200 for expenses, and there was a small bump in the litigation rate, from 225 to 250. That was my only request, and the rest of this is...
I don't want to have anything relying on my memory in terms of what was discussed, God knows when. I have to see it in black and white. So let's hold on this, let's go back and get everything cleaned up, table this.
Why can't we just change the rate like the Ways and Means Committee said to do, so that he can get paid retroactive to August 1st, which is what we agreed on?
It's fine.
It's fine.
But done under the condition that no other parts of the contract are changed, which is not what we have in our documents here.
Why can't, why does it have to be all part and parcel of one thing? The rate is the rate, these other things are other conditions. Just change the rate.
That's the motion on the table.
That's the motion, and I've seconded it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor of adopting the Ways and Means Committee recommendation from last week?
Aye.
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 Now, what we ought to do is either Monday, or at the next Ways and Means Committee, if it's appropriate there, is take this document and ferret through all of these other things, and decide what needs to be changed in that, and then we'll be done completely.
Well, I don't think we need to do it. Monday's a planning meeting, let's...
Do it next Ways and Means.
Yeah, yeah. Stephanie, can you just have a document that makes sense from your perspective, Brian's perspective, Joe's perspective, just take it to Ways and Means at the next meeting?
And it's got all those other elements about the office, about everything.
So, yeah, I can bring back to the Ways and Means, the last document I just brought to you guys, that Brian...
No, I want to see the red line.
Yeah, it's going to be red lined.
Okay, Dr. ...
It was red lined.
Yeah, it was red lined.
I would like to have the opportunity to have a discussion with Brian, if in fact he's representing, that if he's opining that some of these changes have to be made. They are completely disconnected, as far as I can tell, but if he can make a case otherwise, then he should do so.
Why don't we, why don't, I don't know that we need to pay another guy to come and tell us what we should be thinking. I don't, I appreciate your point, but I don't, I would say, we don't need him to come and tell us that.
And I don't think, I want to have another offline discussion. Brian should only put in there what we have to do, not what he thinks would be nice, you know, what we have to do. So if it's either in the law that we have to do it, if it's not, it's not. Got it. Planning fee schedule, let's beat it up on John for a while. We're good at this one, huh? I can't believe you're back with this planning fee.
As you walked up, were you thinking, oh my gosh, I'm next?
Favorite topic.
I thought you guys would let me go because of the last discussion. So what is before you today for council consideration is amendment to our existing planning fee schedule. Ways and Means meeting, I just wanted to remind you that you did approve the fee schedule with the understanding that staff would come back to massage it according to some comments that were made. And so what is before you, if you look at the actual fee schedule, it's been revised to Propose B, but if you look at the planning fee schedule comparison, what I did was highlighted in the two green columns, Propose A, which was what essentially was approved by Ways and Means, and then the Propose B are sort of new changes. Those new changes represent essentially approximately a 20% increase on all of the fees that are associated either with a public hearing process or more extensive review from planning staff's perspective, and so that's just to kind of keep it in somewhat of a consistency standpoint. I think the comments that I gathered from the Ways and Means Committee were that the more substantial type review projects should be assessed more, and so you can notice, for example, site plan review, that fee, based on the scale and scope of a project, would range from $150 to $600, depending on that scope, whereas those projects that are up to 5,000 square foot in size, or up to 10 acres, would be $300, and those that are greater would be 600. And that approximate 20% is just an approximate, because I still wanted to keep the comparable to other municipalities within our area.
Okay, thank you, John. Could I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. No discussion, all in favor?
I have a question to John.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so John, for greater than 5,000 square foot building, you were going up to 600. Could you explain us the difference to the city of Charleston, who in that particular category seems to go up to $2,500?
That's a little bit different, because the city of Charleston is essentially encompassing their review fees for the Board of Architecture Review, and as well as their committee, it's like three committees, process-wise, that their review goes through, opposed to we would just have staff review, but they actually have a different set of committees at those plans we go through. So I think that they're accommodating that it goes through a set of different technical review committees.
Okay, so it's not an apple-to-apple comparison?
Correct, it's not an apple-to-apple, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 It's approved. Conflict of interest policy, who's speaking today?
Dr. Hennfelder, would you like to go ahead and discuss the conflict of interest policy?
I'm not sure I can discuss, but I can certainly introduce. So in the February retreat, we decided to give a task to a small group to develop a conflict of interest policy, despite the fact that we are all covered under South Carolina law in that respect, but we all felt that we want to be a little bit more specific in certain things, and especially from a procedural point of view, be clear how that conflict of interest policy should be handled. So after waiting a little while, I felt it is too important to wait further, so I developed the first, very knowingly, very comprehensive draft that I shared with Stephanie, we then shared it with, I think, an HR consultant, and also Joe Wilson was thankfully involved in this. So what you see in front of you at the moment, what had been in the documents, is the current draft based on that first proposal, and then with quite a bit of alterations for making it, you know, compliant and comprehensive and not too complicated. There are a few things that I believe we have to discuss that have been, you know, debated, but without an explicit decision yet from the work group. One would be how far we go with this conflict of interest policy, both in terms of how far we need to go across the entire involvement of volunteers also in the town. So for example, the question would be, right on page number one, if every volunteer of the Turtle Patrol needs to be involved in that conflict of interest policy and yearly, you know, acknowledgements of such, because it's probably administratively not handable, and if we are, you know, okay with the values that we stated in the contract, and with the fact that we have highlighted explicitly, for I think good reasons, what potential conflicts of interest could arise out of a relationship between, you know, town official, town employee, a town official and a volunteer, as it is related to the other organizations that are governing our item. So I bring this for council for discussion and potential approval.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
So I go back to one of the citizens' comments about the paragraph that says, "All conflict of interest disclosures are held in the strictest confidence possible and are shared on a need-to-know basis." I'm not sure I understand what that means, I mean, I understand what strictest of confidence means, but I'm not sure, shared on a need-to-know basis, what that means, with the person having the conflict of interest? What is the real purpose of doing that? Because if you have a good program to deal with the potential conflict of interest, and it's deemed to have not been a conflict of interest, then there's nothing really to disclose or to hold in the strictest of confidence. So I don't remember which one of the McElvanes said that, Brad. I kind of agree with him, that, you know, if you're going to have a conflict of interest that warrants a documented evidence or documented circumstance, why would you put it in a desk drawer somewhere? I mean, because if you don't, if you say, well, here's, this was raised as a potential conflict of interest, and here was the examination that was made, and here was the determination that was made as a result. It would seem to me that you would almost want to publicize that so as to remove any appearance of conflict of interest, because... appearance of conflict of interest because you've done the research and the examination and so forth. If it turns out that the examination was a conflict of interest and it was dealt with, I would still think you would want to have that public, not for a lynching, but for a, just to make it known so that people would know that we dealt with it appropriately. So I'm not sure I understand why you would want to do that.
And who's they in this case, John? Who's they?
Whoever it is that has the conflict of interest.
I know, but somebody wants to run for something or somebody's employed or somebody is something and they say, "I have a potential conflict of interest." You have an elected town council, an elected mayor, and an employee, town administrator, who's looking at that? So the conflict of interest has been disclosed, these elected officials, these employed executives, they know it and however it's mediated. Why would we publicize that?
But I guess my point is, is that for somebody that's thinking about running?
I don't know, it could be anybody.
That's not somebody that's even considered as somebody that we would do that.
All right, maybe I used the wrong example. Anyone who's legally employed.
So if I can use an example with they, because this COI covers, for instance, town employees. So we had a process that a town employee, if they're, as an example, working for, they would do a COI, that goes to the town attorney. The town attorney would review it and the town attorney would determine is there a potential conflict of interest. They may talk to that employee. We may have employee that may work for an entity on the island. So once they disclose that, yes, I may have a part-time job and I'm working at this entity, they put it on their form, they may send it to the town attorney, the town attorney would talk to that person and the town attorney feels like there's not, then it's just essentially get filed away. So in the question that you're asking, do you share that to the public?
I don't think you regularly publish them.
But I think that's what you're asking.
So my issue is the, you know, my notion of strictest confidence possible is like a safe, that only one person has the combination of. I don't know that we need to have it that strictly confidently or confidently confidence possible. And, you know, in your example, there isn't a...
It's the town council, it's the mayor and it's the town administrator. They've reviewed it, they know what the conflict of interest is. They may say, you know, you're gonna have to quit that job or you may have to sell those shares or you may have to do something before we're gonna hire you or we're gonna do something to you. You have an entity that's gonna be looking at this and hopefully resolving it, but I don't know that you're gonna want to publish it.
I'm not suggesting the alternative is publish.
Well, I think that was previously that was brought up, that the residents should know about it. I think that, I'm not certain that that's the right thing to do.
My dilemma is that, I don't think the opposite of held in strictest confidence possible and shared only on a need-to-know basis, I don't think the corollary to that is publish it to the public. I don't, I think there's probably...
I think that's what was implied.
Well, I don't really care what was implied, I'm saying what I think is not...
A few questions somewhat related to that. I guess the first is the annual conflict of interest disclosure form. That's supposedly everybody is supposed to return that, that's supposed to be returned to the town administrator. Not sure what the rationale is for the town administrator, but my question would be, who is evaluating, the first question is, who's evaluating these conflict of interest disclosure forms for completeness and accuracy?
Well, right now, if it states in this policy that it'd be the town administrator, then it would be me before we've had the town attorney do it.
So you would be the one judging whether or not these are accurately and completely filled out?
Normally I state it for staff, but yeah, based on these outlines, then I guess it's for everyone to include our members.
I'm sorry, this is not the role, from my point of view, this is not the role of the town administrator, that is the role for everybody who fills out this form. That's his or her responsibility, right? That's not, you know, we are not looking at the town administrator or even Joe Wilson to judge if, you know, this form is filled out correctly. What needs to be done, of course, if the form is filled out hopefully correctly and discloses a conflict of interest, then the question is, I think that should be the question you have raised, is then who is going to review this? And that is, as it was answered before, the mayor and the town administrator, potentially together with the town's attorney, if necessary.
Well, that process isn't provided in here, but let me first go back to the prior page. It says failure to disclose, and I want to make clear the context is I'm supportive of a robust conflict of interest policy. I want to just make sure it works for everybody. The prior page, number, bottom of page three, failure to disclose potential conflicts may result in disciplinary action, putting aside employees. Who's determining whether there is a failure to disclose? Who's making the determination what the action that is going to be taken and based on what criteria? And is there a public hearing process or is there an appeal process? If you're talking about removing, dismissing an employee or removing a volunteer from the role with the town, what's the process that's followed if there is, somebody first has to determine that there's a failure to disclose a conflict and there has to be some agreement on that. There may be a disagreement between the person who says, "I don't think that's a conflict," and you're saying the town administrator says it is.
So if it's a volunteer, of course, council, you all appoint volunteers, with the exception of Turtle Patrol, there have volunteers that come on, but if it's someone that you all appointed, then they're removed by council. And so if the recommendation from staff is to remove this person, then it becomes, we can discuss it, is it discussed publicly? But you all have that ability to remove anybody that you appoint anytime, so that will come before you all. If it's staff, then I would talk with the mayor and I would explain what's going on and we will have that discussion if that employee should be removed.
So my opinion is...
If it's any of you all, then that becomes an ethical issue reported to the South Carolina Ethics Commission.
So a couple of other questions along that line. So this says failure to disclose...
Can I, Brad, can I interrupt you? Can I point out something to this? So if we want to be more clear in the document, we can certainly be, right, and add explicit language that would explain, you know, who does what, as we just outlined it, right? We didn't do this in this draft because at least, I guess, to us, it seemed obvious, but I agree, if we want to be, you know, very diligent, then we can add clear paragraphs, who's reviewing, who's making decisions, who's involved in these different scenarios that we just talked about.
I think this needs a little bit of work. I would move to table this and have it sent back to the committee with, for some additional inputs about, you know, exactly what does strictest confidence possible mean, only need-to-know basis, is it for all of them or just certain categories of it? And what's the disposition when something is uncovered? It's not clear, and I know we talk about it, about here's how we would do it, but it doesn't say that anywhere. So I would say that it needs work.
Okay. That's a good point, John. Stephanie, in terms of the HR manual that we have, all of these, you know, so putting elected officials aside, are all of these things covered in the HR manual?
I would have to go through and see. I don't know if all the things are covered, but we can definitely, when we worked with our, again, attorney on this, one of the things that we want to make sure is that, as we're adding things in here, because it was very detailed when we started off with this. And the initial draft was, it was getting very close to being like a contract for employment and we couldn't, and we had to make sure that we did not make this appear that everyone is employed, so we had to make sure that we did not draft something that came across as a contract for employment. The initial draft looked like that to the attorney, so we worked to...
Okay, and Michael, to question for you and the discussions you've had, and really thank you for doing all of this, but I'm not familiar, though, with conflict of interest and unethical behavior. In my mind, those, you know, the unethical behavior is covered by a whole litany of things that would be in the HR manual that would clearly apply to council, elected officials, you know, but I view conflict of interest as something different. So I don't know, but did you talk about that?
That's my understanding as well, yes.
Pardon me?
That is my understanding as well.
But this has a mix, both, kind of combined.
It is, it's an ethics and gifts and entertainment and conflict of all of interest policy kind of rolled up into one.
Well, ethics in a sense, I mean, the way we approach this is looking at, okay, what is creating a conflict of interest? And sometimes, yes, it could be also seen as an unethical behavior, for example, in terms of accepting a gift, but we are not trying to resolve or outline here other, you know, not ethical behavior in terms of, you know, violating trust or disclosing, you know, confidential information, et cetera. That's not part of the conflict of interest policy.
But, Michael, it does, I guess that's one of the issues, on page two, the top half says, "Those bulleted items are prohibited," and it says, "An acceptance of gifts or gratuities," which I'm certainly supportive of something along those lines. I think gifts needs to be defined, but we are saying that's a prohibited activity. And then the question is, what's the consequence if there's a violation of that prohibited activity? On the next page, we simply say, "Failure to disclose the conflict may result in disciplinary action," but nothing about a violation of the prohibited activity.
Again, if we want to be more explicit, you know, for me, this is logic and common sense, but if we want to be ironclad, we can certainly include the respective language items.
Well, John's point is that we all ought to spend some time and make our mark, you know, mark it up and whatever. Is that a motion or is that just a...
So I would move that we table this, have some, either independent, individual review or the committee review based on some input, and we come back next month with a revised version.
Fair enough. Is that okay? I'm carried, everybody?
Second.
Oh, it's a motion. Second, any other discussion? Thank you again, Michael. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. 2023, here comes Bruce.
Go ahead.
With the adoption of the 2001, what we call series of I codes, which includes basically all the building codes and their various editions, we discovered there was a conflict between the International Residential Code and the Property Maintenance Code. Obviously, International Residential Code is used for new home construction, while the Property Maintenance Code is typically a document that we use for rental inspections. The conflict stems from when a homeowner is attempting to utilize a room that has a sloped ceiling or a bedroom. In the IRC, it requires that room to have, once you measure out the area, that 50% of that area has to have a seven-foot ceiling height. In the Property Maintenance Code, for that same verbiage, the only difference is, it's the area is measured at one-third. The problem stems from when we're inspecting new homes, we're inspecting to that 50% guideline, and then when we're going back to inspect that same house for a rental, we're using a third. My recommendation is to change our rental ordinance to reflect the 50% language so there's not this back and forth. We've been using 50% for years, up until the 2021 adoption, and quite frankly, didn't know this change existed in the Property Maintenance Code till recently, and it's up for the proposal from me, for your review, and hopefully your approval.
So these changes that you're proposing in here are to make us consistent or what?
It's consistent from new construction through the rental program that everybody's using the 50% criteria.
So any inspection we make, whether it's a construction inspection or a rental inspection, it's the same basis?
Correct.
That's what you're asking to clarify?
Correct.
That's what this clarifies?
Correct.
So I would move that we accept these changes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Bruce, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead and I'll ask.
So on page three of Exhibit A, under point number three, you are proposing that all rental properties shall remain compliant with all currently adopted codes and ordinances. Does that mean that a house needs to be, if it's a rental unit, needs to be changed permanently if code and ordinances are changing? Or how would I need to understand that?
The only thing that paragraph is stating is that we, that the rental properties as well as new homes just need to be compliant with our currently adopted codes and our ordinances. There's no changes that need to be retroactive or anything like that, it's just a continuation of being compliant with our codes and ordinances.
So if I have an older home that has never had a short-term rental license and they applied a short-term rental license and the house has never been updated to match current building codes, are you saying the inspection for the short-term rental license would fail that house?
No. The only change we're making is that if that homeowner for that existing home is adding an additional sleeping bedroom that has a sloped ceiling and it would have to meet these requirements, there's no other changes that that home would have to comply with.
So just to be clear, for short-term rentals, anything that currently has a license, we're not gonna go in, like with the windows, we're not gonna go in and then essentially say you're no longer in compliance?
We're not gonna go to any existing homes that and state that your, that your room that was previously approved is now no longer compliant and you have to change it. This is only moving forward.
Okay, Joe?
The grandfather then.
Roughly grandfather, yes.
I think what, you correct me if I'm wrong, if they want to convert a study to an occupied bedroom that they're gonna rent...
They have to, it has to be compliant?
Then they have to comply.
You have to comply. For anything new moving forward.
But that would be new. Yeah, I got you, right. Okay. So in the situation...
No, it would, it would.
Not changing anything physically about it, I'm just gonna call it a bedroom. You're saying if it didn't meet this new standard, you couldn't do it, even though now the existing standard would allow you, assuming it fit all the other requirements as a bedroom?
No, if it fit all the requirements as a bedroom, it would be okay, because we're not...
The measurement, it wouldn't qualify, based on what he just said.
The change only happened in 2021 code, prior to the addition of the 2021 code, it was based on 50%. So anything existing prior was inspected based on 50%. This is just to satisfy a difference between the two codes.
So if it was inspected, we said prior, if it was inspected, anything old that was inspected prior to 2021, but if the house, though, the question, though, if it's today, someone says, "I wanna..." But if the house, though, the question, though, if it's today, someone says, I want to, the house was built prior to 2021. And someone comes in and says, I want to convert my study into a bedroom. But they don't meet that slope, would it, would, would we approve it? Because the house was built prior to 2021, but we're now reviewing it, if this is passed.
Again, if it was built prior to 2021, it was inspected at 50%. So there wouldn't be any issues. It's already been inspected once when it was built, and it should meet that requirement. It's also the definition of habitable space. In order to be a habitable space, it has to meet these requirements. So if that room additionally had, if the existing house prior to 2021 had a sloped ceiling in it, when it was being built, it would have been inspected the same criteria that we're talking about. So that sloped ceiling should already be compliant, is what I'm getting at. The new change in the 2020 code is one-third. That's where the conflict came in. For whatever reason, when they rewrote the code, they added in one-third instead of 50%.
So the older homes are better equipped to be okay than the newer ones, is what you're saying?
What's, what's that?
You only have to meet the 30% on a new, new home. And what we're saying is, we want it to be the same as it used to be at 50.
Correct. Yeah, it's been 50% for years. And like I said, we inspect a new home at 50%. And if it was a rental, we go back and inspect it at a third. And we're just trying to make it the same across the board.
Confused. So, so who, under what circumstances does somebody get caught on the short end of the stick on this? I'm sure they will.
The only way I can see anybody getting caught on this is somebody taking an attic space and trying to make it a livable space, because all other rooms within that house have already been inspected to the previous.
Okay, so, so off of one of my bedrooms, this is not a true story, by the way. Off of my, one of my bedrooms, I have a big walk-in closet that really you could say is a, is a walk-in attic. And I want to make it the fifth bedroom in my house when I apply for a short-term rental license. You're saying that you're going to come and inspect and make sure that's a suitable bedroom? It has a window, and I built a closet. And, and so, and, but it's got a sloped roof.
I don't remember having a permit.
Am I gonna, oh, you need one of those too? But, so under what circumstances are you going to inspect that space to be viable as a bedroom?
If this passes, we would inspect it at 50%.
50%.
Yeah.
Well, you're going to, if I'm building new space in the house as an alteration to the house.
If you're building a space in the new house, so let's just say you're not renting it, okay? You're just, you're just doing it.
I'm just making a bedroom.
For the grandkids.
Yeah.
All right? In the IRC, which is already adopted, it would be inspected at 50%.
So there's, there's not a lot of, there's not, there's not a, I mean, somebody's going to get caught on this, but I'm not sure what it, how, how?
Only way it would, like I said, if it was an attic space or a huge knee-wall storage area they were trying to turn into a bedroom, then, and it didn't exist as any kind of room prior to that, those people, yes, would be so-called caught.
So if I get caught, what's the remedy? The BZA, appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
There is no appeal.
There is no appeal?
Codes have no appeal process. Codes do not have an appeal process.
Yeah, one less bedroom.
What about, they don't go to the Construction Board of Appeals?
Can't appeal a code.
Okay.
Essentially, this would become.
Okay.
Sounds, it sounds innocuous, but I'm sure there's a catch somewhere, but.
Is there a motion?
I made a motion to approve, so we could have the discussion.
Okay, I was in a second.
Brad.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's approved.
So when we have somebody come here with, with a problem, you need to make sure you're in the building.
I think that's the answer. Or you can go by your memory, whichever.
Yeah.
Item H. Is this yours? There's another ways it means?
No.
Oh, it's just a code change?
No, this was just a code change.
And he's over the code changes.
And this was just to remove the, the pay-all bills owed by the town when approved by council. Took out the, when approved by council, because council doesn't approve electric bills and water bills. I mean, it's, it's.
Could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm afraid so. This is one, John, the mayor pro tem just used the term, seems innocuous, and maybe it is. But I just want some clarification, and I don't know, is our treasurer here to answer? So, or perhaps Stephanie can answer this, but we're deleting this. It was in there, and I'm assuming it was in there for a reason. But the basic question is, when does the treasurer know that a bill should be paid?
When it, I'm sorry, when it comes in? But can I, what do you mean, when does she know? So when bills come in.
So, so if?
And depending on when the bills come in, so yeah, so if some bills come in, they all have to be signed off by the department head. So if it's a bill, say, for instance, from RTI's, and it's something new that's been approved, we would either have, so the accounts payable would have either material that supports that it's okay to pay it. I would be, and then it has to be either signed off by that department head, and ultimately, it comes to, all the bills come to me. I review them all, and then they, so it goes through kind, sometimes about a two-step, three-step process before it's approved.
We're moving, counsel, but, but Section 2311 says an ordinance is required to appropriate funds and adopt a budget. So that, so that means council approval is required to appropriate funds. How do we know whether, you know, if you go to, and just this is a matter of financial controls, and I don't know how DeRota would deal with this, the town administrator says, "We should pay this bill." Go ahead and pay this bill. How does the treasurer know that, that in fact, there's a, there's a contract, there's a requisition, there's a purchase order, and that the funds have been appropriated by council?
Well, depending on some of the, some of the things that's been appropriated by councils based on the budget. If it was not budgeted, it goes through the proper process of either getting approved with the mayor, mayor pro tem, depending on the cost, or we may have to come back to council, Ways and Means, and ultimately to council, to essentially request that. Once it's approved, then when the bills come in, then they're just approved and paid for.
But, but I mean, is there, yeah.
Invoice is already approved by you through the budget process. It's same with water or utilities. We based it on last year budget, so, or last year actuals. So you approving this Berkeley Electric bill. Everything extra, if it's about $5,000, for example, goes for the approval, signed approval by the mayor. If it's more than $10,000, goes to Ways and Means for your approval, if it's not included in a budget. And the budget is pretty specific on what items we budgeting for, except for placeholders, for example. So then those, whatever falls under this will come to the Ways and Means.
So, again, I'm just, a parade of horrible hypotheticals, just to understand, because we're removing this. Let's say some future town administrator goes to some future treasurer and simply says, "We have a new consulting contract with Acme LLC. And here's a, here's a bill for $12,000. You should pay this." How do you know that that bill should be paid?
Sorry.
It's, it's all according to our procurement policy. Everything over $10,000 has to go to Ways and Means. And so if you, for example, you would examine our bills, and you'll see there is something that was not part of the budget process, you'll see a approval. So, and if it were to be between five and 10, that will be just signed by the mayor. So I would not pay that bill, because I don't have approval from Ways and Means.
Okay, and, but, and this is a conversation Stephanie and I had a little bit, just I'm trying to get some clarity here. On that, that five and 10, between the mayor and mayor pro tem.
Correct.
That's for a purchase requisition.
Yes.
So that's subject to a requisition, and it's got to be something that's requested by a department, correct?
But usually, or it comes from Stephanie, yes, or myself, or a department head. But we'll have the, the signature of either the mayor, or if required, by both, by both, yes.
And then, for example, you keep mentioning Brian, the labor attorney, you know, he presents a bill. How does, how do we, has that been appropriated, approved by council?
So council did approve, we do have a engagement letter with YCR. And depending on the cost, well, in our budget, we do have professional services where we have, where if there's things I need to go to Brian, we can go to him, because it was already approved in the budget by council. Now, if we go over budget, so come end of this year, we'll do a mid-year review, and we'll look at those line items, and we'll determine.
And that's kind of what I was getting to, with some of this stuff. At what point do we come back then for, because we made the point on legal expenses, come back, and we need to amend the budget?
Yeah, we'll do that at the mid-year review, and then at that time, we can amend the budget if necessary.
And we also, you list checks that are cut.
Correct, it's on our website, yes.
It's on our website, so, you know, so presidents at large can look at checks that are cut. We put that in place many years ago, and, and all the, you know.
But to use Brad's example of Acme LLC, the consulting contract, this new one here, DeRota, pay this bill, the first thing DeRota is going to say is, "I don't think I've seen that contract." And so she's got to see the contract.
I, I hope that that's what she.
So, yes, but, but, so one thing, you know, if this is, and going back to the legal expenses, if this is ongoing from the, we know, we usually, in a budget, what we've done, for example, for legal is, we know Joe's contract, plus we put $5,000 for reimbursables, plus 10 miscellaneous, and those, we have those.
Also for Mr. Young's contract.
Plus that too. But what I'm saying, so we put this amount of miscellaneous in those, pretty much just legal and consulting, those placeholders. But with this agreement, there was no contract, it was kind of ongoing basis. So that's why we'll have to have another review of the budget.
Well, and, and that kind of relates to a conversation we'll have either next Monday or at a future time, is kind of the overall expenditures on some of these things, and how are we handling those from a process and a policy standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, the real concern, just to, you know, call a spade a spade, is we want to be sure there are sufficient controls, so we don't have two people in cahoots that embezzle the money.
Well, and, and mindful, I wasn't around at the time, that that has happened before, so, yes, to make sure.
And I also want to bring up too, that our auditors, I believe they do, they pull and do some spot checking, and then, of course, it goes before audit committee, we didn't have an audit committee during that time. We now have an audit committee that, that also looks at these things, so.
Checks and.
There's a lot of eyes, it's no longer just two, correct. There's, we have four people in the process of paying things here.
Well, and so the only question I have is with regard to just, and I don't know the formulation, but we're saying pay all bills owed by the town when approved by council. And I think the, the idea is that council isn't approving each and every bill, but I don't know if that should be qualified by something like pay all bills or by the town to the extent that funds have been appropriated.
Well, either that, or you could just say, pay all bills owed by the town with proper approvals. Then it could be whatever circumstances exist for that particular bill. So is that a, do I have to, is that a motion for me to make? We have a, we already have a, huh? Okay, but, but the motion was just to approve this.
Would you amend your?
So I, I would, I'll amend my motion to say that we change that phrase to pay all bills owed by the town with proper approval.
Subject to proper approval?
Subject to proper approval, yeah.
I would, I would second that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Marsh restoration.
All right, I'm back again. All right, so, as, as I'm sure you recall, we've talked about this feasibility proposal study at the last two meetings, two Ways and Means meetings. At the last one, the contract was approved with a hard stop after the initial assessment phase. So we've completed that initial assessment phase. And so what I provided to you, you know, so I guess let me tell you about the, the two meetings that we had. We met with the, with the KIWA River Bridge Access Subcommittee. And then we met with the full Marsh Management Work Group, which has representatives from all entities. We got 100% buy-in on the, the five kind of main goals and objectives, as well as 100% buy-in on continuing with the feasibility study. So I'm here today to, to say, you know, to ask if we, if we can continue and move forward and complete the study. And then one other thing that I put in there, because there obviously have been a lot of discussions about the, the legal ramifications with the conservation easement. And there's a little bit of new information based off some, some consultations between the town attorney and two attorneys for KIWA Partners. And they're in agreement that the, that the easement in this area doesn't begin until 100 feet from a platted property line. And so I've included a map in here, which kind of shows you that 100-foot buffer, if you will, where the easement is not in place. And it actually shows it on both sides of the road, but there is, the conservancy does not have a conservation easement on the left side of, of the road, but the 100-foot buffer on the right side is, is what is in place. And so, you know, I think, not that, not that that was necessarily an impediment for the project to move forward, but it certainly makes, makes things cleaner, because any potential, it, it would be incredibly unlikely that any work would extend outside of that 100-foot buffer. And so also included the preliminary report from Alco Consulting as part of this. And then, assuming I get the go-ahead today, we'll, we'll continue on and, and complete this feasibility study. And hopefully come back with, with some ideas here in the next couple of months.
Motion to approve, please.
Second?
Are you asking for a motion or making a motion?
I'm asking.
I move, yeah, second.
Okay, discussion?
I just have a, a question. So Jim, you indicated that all of the committee people had 100% buy-in, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, I'm already asking that, because I see the conservancy as part of the committee, and that they were in attendance. So I just wanted to confirm, does that mean the conservancy is on board with this?
So the conservancy has two staff representatives on the Subcommittee. And they have, they have a staff member on the full committee. And I don't know if Diana is a board member or not, but she is, she's on the, the work group. So they were supportive 100% of these five objectives and moving forward with the study.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jim, now that I'm reading this, I guess I'm confused. We signed a contract. What? What? Is this an additional $31,000?
No. No, it's just.
This is the $31,000.
So ways and means approved the full contract, but said that I had to come back to you after the initial phase and say, okay, is everyone on board, can we move forward?
Yeah, 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 okay, all right.
And there was an ongoing discussion, my client sent an email looking at these 2017 easement 100-foot, and that, that's all been, everybody's looked at it and resolved.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
We have a, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Could I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Need to read the information.
Executive session pursuant to section 30-4-70, contractual real estate building and site located at 1 Kewa Island Parkway. Discuss negotiation of the purchase inside of the Kewa Island Real Estate Office. Okay?
The move.
A few meetings ago.
Second.
A few of us requested that we go into executive session, the end, I don't know how long it will take, we'll get a public comment before that, and we discussed that. It's a consensus, that was pretty good in here.
Can you please come to the microphone, we cannot hear you.
He just asked if you can consider moving the citizen comments.
Do we, do we need to amend the agenda? I mean, it certainly makes sense.
You would need to amend the agenda.
I, I really don't care.
So I'll, I'll rescind my motion of the executive session.
And I would move, I would move that we amend the agenda to allow council, citizens comments to proceed consideration of agenda item nine.
And I would second that.
Citizen comments.
Need a, a.
A vote.
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Dave DiStefano, 31 Burrows Hall. One of the items I want to address, which was discussed very early at the meeting, kind of informally, but it's got to do with housing and either workforce or low-income housing. I was involved in a project in Rhode Island many years ago where the town of Barrington built some low-income housing, very exclusive community, high-end. They couldn't, they couldn't get people to move in because there's nothing for the people of that socio-economic background to do in that town, they just didn't want to live there. I, I'm concerned here that if we build low-income housing in this immediate area, a couple of things. One is if it's a family of four, one person may be working here, the other person may be working elsewhere, et cetera. So I think geographically, and I've discussed this with some other people, geographically the best place for workforce housing is like halfway between here and Charleston, so that those people at that level, they're not coming to Heggie's, they're not going to get on Kewa, they're not going to get into Seabrook, that's where they're going to go to socialize and meet other people. And that's what the city of Barrington found, that the people just, they don't, I've talked to many people that work here, they go, I don't want to live way out here, what am I going to do? So that was just a comment on that. The other comment I had regarding the, the arts center, I go to the Charleston Music Hall quite often. When I'm comparing the numbers to them, that's about 900 seats, they do 105 events a year, they average about 600, 650, that's like 65,000 people. Their average ticket price is around $35 to $40, just like this. And, and I just saw some numbers in here, rental days, they have rented in, in, in some other kind of income of over $650,000. And I looked at the numbers, that's averaging $12,000 a week and, and 140 people at every event. And I just, we would need a much more, or the group would need a much more explanation about that. And the other comment that the gentleman made in his first presentation, he said his target audience to get this many people to, to live, come to these events is 60 minutes away. That's almost asking people from Charleston to come here for music. So that, that's, I, I just found those as very questionable statistics for the purposes of that. I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Maura McLeven, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. I did want to commend Dr. Hidingsfelder. I think that a conflict of interest, kicking off a conflict of interest discussion and trying to figure out the matrix and what you want in it, I think that really is incredibly difficult. And so I very much appreciate the work that he did and staff did with him. I do think that any conflict of interest policy or ethics policy or whatever you want to call it, or maybe they're two different policies, it leads the community to believe we have protection. And so the elements of the document and what's required and the enforcement needs to meet that expectation as well. Saying you have a conflict of interest policy and then it goes into a drawer makes us think that something's being done about conflicts that really isn't. So I just want you to keep that in mind because what we have now is an honor system and you could actually put a policy in place that's no much, not much better than an honor system. So I would like you to keep that in mind, but Dr. Hidingsfelder, I really do commend your work on this and I know that it was quite a task. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I'm Roger Warren, president of the Kewa Island Golf Resort. I was, I too was intrigued by the discussion early on, thinking the same thing that Dave just talked about, and that's workforce housing. Obviously, as the largest employer on the island and having other people who are employing on the island, it is a significant issue for all of us who are looking to get employees. But there isn't really a one-size-fits-all solution. I don't think the community should feel responsible for workforce housing. But I do believe that if we come up with a positive way to do workforce housing, we would appreciate the support of the community. I understand all of the issues that go with it. We, we're, we are working and planning on trying to build workforce housing. But initially, as we brought that idea, we have received input from different groups who really don't want to see it out here. Well, one group doesn't want to see it out here, one group doesn't want to see it where we want to put it. Both of them have interests that really don't match up with what our interest is. There is truth in the statement that some people don't want to live out here closer to their job. We even were going to build, try to build or provide daycare, and many of the mothers who work for us said, I don't want to ride with my kid to work every day, they'd like to leave him off and then go pick him up. That stunned me, but it, it also gave us insight as to what we were dealing with and we had to do more research. They've, a clear majority of our employees right now live in West Ashley, live in James Island, live in, that's where they live now. One of the reasons that we're struggling with workforce housing is the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment right now there is $1,650 for a one-bedroom apartment. That's a significantly higher price than it was three years ago when it was $800. So we have a problem, we're working, it's in our best interest as a business to work to solve this problem and we're looking at it and we have options that we're looking at. Obviously, we have a lot of land at Andel West that the county is offering incentives to anybody who will build workforce housing, they'll give you a real incentive to do it. And since we're dealing with the county there, that would be an option. We own land between here and, and Maybank, closer to here than Maybank, that we own, that we could build it there, the county would support it, but the Johns Island Community Association won't. They want it here. Now, we're in the urban boundary where our land is, so you'd think that we'd get support for being in the urban boundary. So I thank you for bringing up your thoughts. I know you did it in the best interests of somebody, but you brought them up. And I know that the town in trying to do their plan is trying to be a responsive community going forward to what's the best thing for the community. And it's amazing how there are so many conflicts on an issue like that. So I'm sure you'll hear from us again, we'll keep you informed of what we're doing. I'm working with the board of directors that wants to make sure that we do it right so that we don't lose money on it. That's an issue too. So it is not an issue that you're dealing with singly or the community's dealing with singly, we are going to work on it, we have a vested interest, we'll try to find a solution that works for everybody, but somebody is going to be disappointed and we're just all going to have to live with it because that's life. And I'll make one more comment about the performing arts center. I found it interesting that one of the proposals was to put it on Andel West. I don't, I hadn't heard about that and maybe Chris, Chris has, Chris Carrata had heard about that and I'll, I'll talk to him about that. And it was an interesting concept. And as I said when we were, and when I asked in a prior meeting, how many have these been, how many of these have been done successfully privately? He said, not very many. So I understand the need, I was disappointed that our facilities were deemed unworthy. I didn't take it too harshly, but we spent a lot of money on those places, I think that they should have been respected a little bit more. But other than that, we would be happy to be in, I would be happy to be involved in any discussion about this, all you got to do is ask. Thank you for the time.
And if I might just address just the one point, Roger, that you've made about Chris, and I just, to clarify matters for the record so you know, so we had had a couple of conversations with Chris at the very highest level about, gee, conceptually, we're looking around for, you know, potential spaces where an art center might be located, assuming you could do everything else. And he says, conceptually, that's kind of was all, the idea of having something like that at Andel West, which would be potentially synergistic with dining and food and all, would be, you know, worth considering, talking about, he made it absolutely clear that his business is to make money. And he wasn't on the elimacinary side of the family business. And so it was, it was just kind of, wow, gee, is there a potential for a ground lease or something like that? There was nothing ever specifically talked about that one particular one-acre parcel or anything else, it was just a concept, would, would this be of potential interest to Riverstone in building out the tenant footprint in, 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 in Andel West?
Thank you for covering for Chris. I know he'll appreciate that. And I'm sure that depending on what the stage was in the discussions about Andel West, at some points he'd have said anything to make sure he got to move forward, so we'll work through it.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion, it's been approved.
So I'll, I'll, I'll resubmit the motion to move to executive session.
So, let's go.
Second.
Second. Yeah. So we don't need a motion?
No, I don't think.
Once I'm working on the line. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So essentially, there's no motion that's necessary because they've already taken action on it. So essentially just come out of executive session saying that it was a discussion to allow the mayor to continue.
I would simply suggest saying that come out executive session, what's were taken, council had previously authorized to submit a non-binding letter of intent to the, with regard to the subject property, and there's been no change in that status.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
And there's no vote needed for that. So that's it.
So no actions were taken, no decisions were made, it's just to continue?
Yep.
So we don't even need anything other than that?
I don't think we need anything.
You don't need to say the no-action piece, just all what Brad had just said, come out executive session. Yep, and then.
Did you get that?
Then they called to adjourn the meeting.
To continue negotiations.
We, we, we simply authorized him, I think, to submit a non-binding letter of intent.
Which is to continue, which was already.